President, a couple of meeting orders. I want to please rise and ask all the exact persons for the floor.
Give a blessing.
Let's bow heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessing. We thank you for your grace. We ask that you go with us in our decisions that we just thrust this afternoon or this evening. God has given us everything that we might do for the benefit of Warren. Go with us and guide us this way as soon as we can.
If anyone remains standing, I'll let you clear.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May they see it. Madam Clerk, you called.
Alden Fulton.
Here.
Alden Telfrey.
Reverend.
Here.
Alden Mosley.
Here.
Alden Anderson.
Here.
Alden Ross.
Yep.
Note that all are present. Item four would be the approval of the minutes. You have any packet?
I look back at the minutes we approved as mail for January night.
Second.
Motion, Alden Henderson, Second, Alden Reek to approve the minutes as a mail. Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, raise your hand. I see six for and none against the minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
Okay, the balance on our general fund on January thirty-fourth was three hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. Revenue for January was two hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and fifty-two cents. The expenses by department were as follows. Administering, twenty thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Law enforcement, seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Fire, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-eight cents. Sanitation, thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and ninety cents. Building codes, three thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and seventeen cents. District Court, six thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-nine cents. Municipal building, one thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Recreation, five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Cultural Center, one thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Armory, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Other, nine thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. The total expenditures for January was one hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. That's a decrease of thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-two cents. The balance in the straight fund on January thirty-fourth was two hundred and three thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents. Revenue, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Expenses, thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-four cents. And that's a decrease of nine thousand, thirteen dollars and twenty-three cents. The balance on the other accounts in January thirty-fourth was two million, three hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty cents. Revenue is five hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents. Expenses were five hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents. And that's a decrease of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. You should have a copy of the received treasures report if you have any questions.
Move that with the city of treasures report.
Reverend. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve our financial statements as presented. Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, raise your hand. I see six for and none against. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
In the city sales and beef packs in January, we received fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-five cents. County sales and beef packs, we received forty-one thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and about ten cents.
Alden will recognize at this time to, we have my district clerk reports, you see in your packet. Back to item six, public comments. Alden will recognize, introduce anyone? Here none, James Young signed in. Mr. Young?
I'm here.
He passes. Mr. Lipton?
Mr. John, we've pleasure to have today the Chairman of the Bradley County Industrial Development Corporation and the Chairman of the Intermodal.
Thank you. I can just hand you these. This is probably very brief with you. This is a little bit of a handout of the activities of BCIDC for this past year. Might be a few things on there that could be of interest. We just finished annual meeting and that pretty much encompasses, I think, a lot of things involved in this past year. Been an excellent working relationship, as you can see in there, with the, with the City of Warren and others in the county. As far as one or two items that are very current that I think you'd be interested in. We have entered into the contract with Dr. Foskew and that will proceed under the contractual arrangements that were prepared by the city and, and working with Dr. Foskew. Another thing that could be of interest to you, we have been working with H and L Poultry. I know that they're gonna be probably coming to your Economic Development Committee. We're listening to them. It would be wonderful to see that operation back up and operational, if possible. Let me put that in there. Another aspect, they have traveled Turkey and have kept us posted pretty much on some contractual arrangements that they feel like they might have coming out of Turkey. Also, they're working on some exports into Russia. Potential would be something between forty to sixty jobs before it comes. I know you need to visit with principals on that at some point in time, but we have heard them out. And I've been kind of a sounding board to listing where they are and, and where they're going. The other thing that I think that you recommended that we have done, our board did approve at its annual meeting, a recommended working relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. That would be in the sharing of an individual which would assist Mr. King and also take care of the intermodal work since we want to keep those offices here in Warren. And the other would be a little bit more professional touch. What we're looking for is a very qualified secretary that could do the work of both. We think that moves us in the right direction. Excellent working relationship with, with the Chamber and a lot to be done. But if you have any questions, well, feel free to ask, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
John, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody on the council getting questions for Mr. Lipton? All right, thank you, John, I appreciate that. Under Mayor's report, we have a BCIDC report which they give us. You have it in your packet. You have the income statement along the sales tax side and the, and the ballot sheet there in front of you. In your packet, you have a resolution to obtain funds for an economic community development project. Now, this is a project we have been working on for some time and we've been invited back to apply for the second round, or the second submission of the same application, which generally means that you are probably gonna get funded. And what this involved was an application to redo a major sewer line that I have put the little map on in front of you. It starts, it primarily covers, it starts on Rock Street, hits George, comes through behind some houses, hits Martin Street, winds up over on Newton Drive where it connects with a new, where we've already done all the sewer repair. They've put in a new line from Newton Drive all the way over to probably Sixty-three South is about how far that runs. So what you got is a line that runs down George. I think it's caved in once on George and they just ran over in the ditch and put a new line, a portion of a line in, put two manholes in and just patched that one area so they wouldn't have to tear up George Street anymore. This will cover several neighborhood, several streets. It will cover portions of Rock, Henry, Pearson, George, portions of Cobb and Butler will all go into this line along with Forest Road which is pumped over to George and then turns and, and at George it becomes gravity flow, if I remember what Mr. Rand told me. It's a major project to repair this, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for this little short stretch and that's what we applied for. And it will be Resolution A five six six. And there'll be two resolutions, one to apply for the money and two to hire a grant administrator for our Reek Resolution A five six six. A resolution authorizing the City of Warren to proceed with an application to obtain funds for a community development project, whereas the City of Warren is applying to the State of Arkansas for an Arkansas Community and Economic Development Grant and whereas it is necessary that certain conditions be met as part of the application requirements. And whereas the City of Warren will conduct a public hearing as part of the application process to receive and consider comments on community development and housing needs and proposed activities. Whereas a result of the public hearing, the City of Warren will identify and prioritize the community development and housing needs. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council Warren, Arkansas, that Mayor Brian Martin is authorized to submit an application to the State of Arkansas to obtain grant funds for a community development project. Resolution A five six six.
I move the adoption of Resolution A five six six. Second.
Motion, Alden Fulton, Second, Alden Henderson to adopt Resolution A five six six. Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, raise your hand. I see six for and none against. The second resolution will be A five six seven. And that's hiring Southeast Arkansas Economic Development District to help write the grant, which they've already done once. Resolution A five six seven. A resolution designated, designating nonprofit agency as CDBG Grant Administrator. Whereas Warren, Arkansas has applied to Arkansas Department of Economic Development for an Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program Grant to replace failing sewer lines in order to prevent blockage of sewer system. And whereas Warren, Arkansas recognizes the need for assistance in administering the anticipated ACEDP grant in compliance with applicable federal, state, and local laws. And whereas Warren, Arkansas has a longstanding relationship with Southeast Arkansas Economic Development District, Inc. and feels confident that it will administer the above referenced project competently. Therefore be resolved that the Warren City Council hereby authorizes Mayor Brian Martin to designate Southeast Arkansas Economic Development District as the project administrator for the above referenced ACEDP grant, subject to Arkansas Department of Economic Development approval and entering into a contract for ACEDP administrative services with such agency for project administrative services.
Move the adoption of Resolution number A five six seven. Second.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution A five six seven. Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, raise your hand. I see six for and none against. By the way, the match of money will come out of, from the folks down the street. We have commission reappointments. Both have agreed to serve on the Board of Electoral Examiners. We'll take them one at a time. Roger George, Board of Electoral Examiners for a three-year term.
Are they both in regular attendance?
Or we haven't had a meeting in two or three years, so if you didn't answer that, it would be yes. Any meeting that they've had, they've attended.
I move that we approve Roger George. Second.
Motion and second for Roger George to the Board of Electoral Examiners. Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, raise your hand. I see six for and none against. Need a motion for Mr. St. John.
I move that we accept the name of Ron St. John. Second.
Motion and a second for Ron St. John. Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Six for and none against. Thank you very much. At this time, we go into administrative and standing committees. We have Police Chief report, Randy. You have his report in your packet. And there is one item of business. If y'all have no questions, it's the Chief.
I just looked out here, but see, we're three officers short.
Yes, sir. Randy might.
Is there any application?
We are in the process, they're also running two background investigations to help fill those slots.
Are they experienced people or someone that we will have to train?
I know one of them is and I'm pretty sure the other one is also. We had several.
Experienced.
We had three people that were cert, were certified already, but one of them not gonna make it, so we're doing the other two to see how, how it comes out. But I believe we will probably have to send them to, probably a two-week refresher course if they're, if they pass the background. Hopefully get that done.
You said they're certified, but you have to pass the background again?
Yes, sir. You have to run a background just because they didn't, they have not ever worked for us before. State law requires you run a background on individuals before you hire them as a police officer, even though they have been a police officer in the past.
Is it customary that they go for like the refresher, they are coming from another?
Yes, ma'am, it depends. They've changed the, the protocol. Now, if you have been in law enforcement for a certain period of time, I'm not exactly sure what the timeframe is. You must pass a test. If you pass the test and, and they send you to, I believe it's a two-week course, if you've only been out for a certain period of time. They've just changed it recently and I'm not real sure what the time, the time is on that.
Have we had Ms. Simpson's going away celebration?
Yes, ma'am, she never informed me of her intention to retire, so, but they did have a little party for her and she had retired.
You said that she didn't inform you of the retirement?
I'm sorry.
You said it didn't inform you of the retirement?
No, sir.
She just decided not to come back?
I think she contacted the mayor's office, but her intentions was to retire, but she never reported to or informed me of her intentions.
Strange. Okay, go ahead.
Any other question?
I think we're about length of law.
Just to get it that way. Alden Fulton?
Yes, the police committee has not met, however, we do have one order of business. I understand that Roy Calasses has completed training at the Arkansas Law Enforcement Training Academy and is eligible for a step increase from eight A to eight B. And I move that this be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Fulton, would you mind adding to your motion that that be effective as of when he graduated from the academy?
Exactly.
Zach, do you mind?
No.
Okay. All right, the motion is gonna be to promote Roy from eight A to eight B effective December sixteenth. Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor of the motion, raise your hand. I see six for and none against. All right, Chief, thank you very much. Old Madam Chairman, anything else? Before I discuss anything? Fire chief, power, whatever.
Yeah, fire.
Okay. I guess we'll talk about fire, fire chief. I mean, Alden Reek?
I have no business.
Sanitation manager, Mike May. And Alden, any other questions for Mike? Mike, you got any report you've ever given, give him sanitation. He said no. Alden Moseley, you recognize any business?
I have been such time there.
I will change your hat to building official, Mike May. There are a couple of things coming up under planning commission if you stick around for that. You all have this month of report on building activity in Warren for the month of January. And then there will be a couple of things under planning commission that he'll hang around for. Thank you, sir.
Oh, let me just want to ask a question on this. And I hate to be, I hate to speak this thing again on cleanup. I guess we're still in the same status?
We're, we're actively working on four complaints that came in this month, trying to resolve them. Homeowners are willing to work with me, so we're willing to work with them. We did have some contractors that have a housing list and we're waiting on bids on those for demolition. I believe there's four out on that list.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna just kind of beat the horn about it. I think in conjunction of what Mr. Lipton was saying and the sport, trying to get business and things of that nature to come, it's still gonna be hard to get business to come. That's gonna be still folks where your younger folks want to come. If you don't have the housing for them. And going over to check on my animals over here, right next to Mr. Clyde temping them. At one time, that house crossed their adjoining deal at Seven Hill. They had a swimming pool and all that and go through it now and it's all just going down. And that's, you know, you're kind of a nice area. And it's sad to see where Mr. Mr. Minus Temples had their place for so long and see the house there just going down. And it bothers me to see that as well as all over the city. But we've been dealing with this for a long time. But it's gonna take, it's gonna take an assertive effort in order to get business to come, to bring your younger folks back to your jobs. You know, I mean, we can sit here and drum, 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 but it's gonna take that folks. Because, you know, I just don't see it and I wish and I hope that it would come to pass, but it's gonna be hard because it just don't happen. And just coming out of Dallas just the other day and it's, and I know that's a different, different level of thinking, you got a lot going on, but, you know, some of these areas out there is, is just booming and just going on out. Terrell, Terrell, Texas, Greenville, Texas, all of those areas are just, just jumping either way. And I just hate to see what, you know, we're trying to get jobs and keep our people in this field. So I'm not criticizing you or anything, but I'm just saying, in order for us to move forward, it's gonna take that. But anyway, that's just my thought.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mike. Street forum, come in.
We cleaned up, I don't know, threw a whole major garbage down this month. Old Peanose Road, Enningson Road, Hazel Street. We held ourselves, we dumped a load of garbage that people had thrown up and they ditched it, piled up little spots. Put a good bit of concrete, street cuts and what was on your leaves.
Any questions for the street forum? We did have a street hearing and I asked Alden Lawrence to report on that.
Yes, sir, we met, the street committee met on February the second at five thirty. And we had a very small gathering, but we went move forward, moved forward. Unfortunately, Mr. Toefrey, Mr. Reek, all of the Reeks and all of the Toefrey were, could not make it. But we went on it as well as Mr. Allen. And we all had four people present and that was, Mr. Mosley was here as well. Mr. Brendan Davis, Mr. Corey Davis, Mr. Roy, Roy Davis, and Mr. Bobby Mitchell. And we had, they had some concerns over addressing the problem on St. James, on St. James two seventy-eight. And Mr. Roy George Davis spoke on the West Church Street where the south side of the street is sinking. And that was all the comments that were made in reference to, in reference to the street committee's concern that citizens had. I'd just like to say too that we have, have the estimates on the streets that we had asked to have a, a cost appraisal on. And those three streets that, that we asked to get a, a cost on, it's three hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. We have a budget of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and that leaves us a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and five, fifty-two dollars in the hole. So, you know, not very much we can do along those lines and it's, you know, I don't, I don't know. We have to go back and rebound this for us, what we can do for the hundred and twenty thousand dollars we have, but.
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five. Well, one twenty-five, we're still, we're still way off. So we're gonna have to go back and modify our search here on these six streets. There's only six streets that we have and we don't know the needs that we have throughout the city. But these six streets, it's a cost estimate of three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. It's not going too far. Anybody got a suggestion? I don't want to hear any donations. Mr. Mosley?
I'm sure I have. I just gonna have to get as much, as much done as, as far as the money will go and that's as far as you can go right now.
Did you say three streets or six streets?
We had six streets.
Six streets.
And so I'm gonna ask the committee to get together again and then we look at this again. Say the cost on the tonnage is, asphalt is ninety-two, ninety-two, ninety-two dollars a ton. So that's going up quite a bit.
That was last year's.
Last year.
Well, we paid last year, so that's the only way I could give him the cost figures was to give him last year's tonnage price. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How far on a, I noticed on that street list, twenty, I guess that twenty-one feet or so, that's a width.
But you got a different width.
I know, but there is a different width on different streets.
Yeah.
Looked like to a three of them were twenty-one feet. How far will a ton of two-inch overlay, how many feet will that go on a twenty-one foot wide street? Four foot, eight foot, ten foot?
Are you talking a ton? It may go four foot.
That's what I was thinking, I was thinking it's down in.
Might be four.
Three and four foot range, so ninety-two dollars.
I never have, it took a ton, we know, when we get, when we get it, we got, usually got twenty tons or something like that we dump out. You know, but. And something else is misleading, gonna be misleading bad. Tilbury Street is gonna take more than what we've got here, because if you go down Tilbury Street, you'll understand what I'm talking about. We gotta pull one layer there, just get that thing back in Tilbury, just get it back where we can overlay it. And so it's gonna be expensive. When I went to work here in ninety-eight, asphalt, four, two dollars a ton, ninety-two dollars a ton, if I tell you anything. I mean, it's out of range.
Mr. Chairman, anything else?
I don't have anything else other than we need to get some money from somewhere.
All right, Mr. Adams, thank you. Community and Economic Development Committee?
We did have a meeting to discuss the land for the shooting range and other things concerning it and we gave the mayor a vote of confidence on continuing that project because we ran into several roadblocks, as you know, but it was a thing that was important for the community as well as, you know, things that we already said that we was gonna do, so it's kind of like follow up and basically just give ourselves a pep talk, let us know we were still interested and looking forward to finishing that project for the community. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
All right, thank you. Ladies and minions, all in here?
No business.
Alright, Planning Commission, you have the minutes, and in those minutes, you'll see there are two folks that have rezoned requests. And I'll take the first one. Was Scott Richardson, and that's gonna be the one where you see in the second paragraph, zoning from C one to R one. It's gonna be ordinance eight six eight. And we'll need a motion, uh, to proceed with this, we'll need a motion to put ordinance eight six eight on its first reading. And so what we're doing is Scott and Karen Richardson have come to the planning commission and received planning commission approval to rezone from commercial to R one on two thirteen Central Street, they own it on there, and it's been commercial, and they want to change it back to residential. It was residential before they got it, so that's what we got.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, put ordinance eight six eight on its first reading, in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, put on the first reading, raise your hand. I see six four, none against. Ordinance eight six eight, an ordinance to amend ordinance number two twenty and for other purposes. Whereas by ordinance number two twenty, the City of Warren, Arkansas adopted its zoning regulations for the City of Warren, Arkansas, the zoning regulations prepared for Warren Planning Commission by City Planning Division, University of Arkansas, Fayetteville, Arkansas, dated May nineteen sixty-four, and adopted by the Warren Planning Commission on the eleventh day of May nineteen sixty-four. Whereas the Warren Planning Commission is certified to the City Council of Warren, Arkansas, that said ordinance should be amended to classify the property in the City of Warren, Arkansas, herein after described from C one to R one in order to sell the property for residential use for the house on the property. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Warren, Arkansas, section one. That ordinance number two twenty of the City of Warren, Arkansas, including but not limited to all maps and descriptions of zoning districts B, and the same hereby is amended to classify all that property in the City of Warren, Arkansas, described in attachment A to this ordinance, and incorporated herein as if set forth word for word in this ordinance from C one to R one in order to sell the property for residential use for the house on the property. Section two, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication dated this thirteenth day of February two thousand twelve, and you see the, you can read the attachment A on the back as a legal description. So we'll need a motion to, uh, sus- suspend the rules and place it on its second reading.
Some rules, suspend or replace ordinance eight six eight on its second reading?
Second.
Have a motion in the second to place ordinance eight six eight on its second reading, in discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand. I see six four, none against. Ordinance eight six eight, an ordinance to amend ordinance two twenty and for other purposes.
Rules, suspend or replace ordinance on eight six eight on its second reading?
And a motion in the second to place ordinance eight six eight on its third reading, in discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand. I see six four, none against. Ordinance eight six eight, an ordinance to amend ordinance two twenty and for other purposes, need a motion to adopt.
Who would adopt, uh, ordinance eight six eight?
Second.
Motion in the second to adopt ordinance eight six eight, in discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand, six four, none against. Ordinance eight six eight is adopted, Madam Clerk, the city attorney notified me that he would not be here today, that he would provide you with a clean copy tomorrow. The second one is, uh, ordinance eight six nine, and it, what it involves is on, if you look at the minutes, there's a typo error. It is actually a house on, uh, the second rezone request is Eduardo Roman at six hundred North Myrtle. That's not North Martin, it's six hundred North Myrtle. It's on the e- east side of the street, going north. And it would be rezoned from R two to C two for the purpose of becoming a commercial lot, and if we build a mechanic shop on that property. And it'll be ordinance eight six nine, need to place on its first reading.
Second, barrel?
Myrtle, Myrtle Street, right on your right, where they're cleaning the lot off, on the right, just past Harvey's Welding Shop.
Cross the street, Mr. Corey, yeah.
From, oh, you told me that.
They cleaned off a big lot there.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm just saying, you said that made you.
Next to Dr. Reinhardt's lot.
Oh, okay. And that's on their mechanic shop?
I believe that's what he intends to put there in that right.
That's what he told me that he was gonna put there.
They've done a lot of work on it, got it all cleaned up.
He's been told about the privacy fence, uh, that would need to be put up, a six-foot high privacy fence boarding, uh, residential property on his north side. He's agreed to do that, and, uh, he has not brought me any kind of plans or anything. All that'll have to go through the, through my office to be approved, uh, to be able to fit physically on the, on the lot. He's aware of the setback requirements and things, so, and, uh...
Will that, will that, uh, fence also, it's on the north side, also be on the east side, because of residential?
North and east side.
Residential property east of it too.
But you don't have the plan yet.
He doesn't have any plans as far as, uh, the physical size of the shop, no. But he won't be able to start construction until, until he brings me to my office.
And... Again, I, again, that's all of the problems, me, because I, I can reflect back years when that area was nice, but it's going downs, well, I guess, we had to go to a vote first, before, before this discussion.
Okay, according to the minutes, there were, there was no one in opposition. Was there anyone there that lived in that neighborhood?
No, ma'am.
There was not?
Everybody was contacted though.
And they know the type business that wanted to be next door to their dwelling place of residence?
Well, see, all those folks in that area, Ms. Anderson, has probably died out.
Those rental properties, I'm sure one of those right there, just right there adjacent to it, six-foot one on the north side.
I move we'll replace ordinance, uh, eight six nine on its first reading? Have a motion, do we have a second? Motion in the second to place ordinance eight six nine on its first reading, any discussion, ma'am? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand. I see three, four. All those against, three against, chair votes four. An ordinance to amend ordinance number two twenty and for other purposes. Whereby the ordinance number two twenty, the City of Warren, Arkansas, adopted its zoning regulations for the City of Warren, Arkansas. The zoning regulations prepared for Warren Planning Commission by City Planning Division, University of Arkansas, Fayetteville, Arkansas, dated May nineteen sixty-four, adopted by the Warren Planning Commission on the eleventh day of May nineteen sixty-four. Whereas the Warren Planning Commission is certified to the City Council of Warren, Arkansas, that said ordinance should be amended to classify the property in the City of Warren, herein described as R two to C two in order to open a mechanic shop. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Warren, Arkansas, section one. That ordinance number two twenty of the City of Warren, Arkansas, including but not limited to all maps and descriptions of zoning districts B, and the same hereby is amended to classify all that property in the City of Warren, Arkansas, described in attachment A to this ordinance, and incorporated herein as if set forth word for word in this ordinance from R two to C two in order to open a mechanic shop. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication, and the legal description is attached. Suspend the rule, place ordinance eight sixty-nine on its second reading?
Second.
Have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and place ordinance eight six nine on its second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. I see two, four, all those against. I see four against, motion fails, the ordinance is stuck in limbo on its first reading. Next item of business will be, uh, Aviation Commission, no meeting. Water and Sewer, uh, you have the minutes of the meeting. Parks and Rec, uh, the director's report you have, uh, in your packet. You should have had a certified bid sheet. We did accept bids, uh, until two o'clock on February ninth for promoting services. You had three bidders, they were all close together. Uh, the existing company is Pro Long Care, uh, they've done incredible job.
I know that we contract with Pro Long Care in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for our void.
We have a motion to continue with Pro Long Care at nine seventy-five?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. I see five, four, those against, none against, those abstaining, one extension. Alright, thank you. Anybody, any questions for Mr. Arden?
You want to give us an update on the lighting at the city park? We just can't wait for it to be completed.
Mr. Potterberg, he likes, uh, in the middle, where we're gonna put the receptacle, he likes a couple of those, and he's gotta do the trenching. He told me it'd be like two weeks, but I'm thinking with the weather, probably a month, you know, if we can run the wire. That's, you know, putting them up. He's got one up down there, if you noticed it, uh, where they're drawing the other track. Just standing there, kind of, we can see what it looks like.
That's an example.
It all look good.
Alright, thank you, sir. Housing Authority, they had no meeting, Cultural Center, you got that report in your packet. Unfinished business, none, any announcements, or public comments, I'm reading Mr. Henderson in.
Uh, Bradley County Job Fair is scheduled for maybe ten at Emmanuel Baptist Parish from ten to two thirty, and each of you should have a handout.
I'm sure she'll be calling y'all quick to work too. And I believe Miss Ed is strong, yes?
I do have a statement to make.
If you don't mind, come on up.
I, I think I talked loud enough, because everybody didn't hear me. But, uh, I was listening at the statement about the mechanic shop going up close to where people live. I have a concern about that to the mayor and to all the city council members. To me, you know, we have to, uh, be concerned about the neighbors that live next to mechanic shops and what have you, because there are fumes that comes from these shops that, uh, people live there. And we know we have a lot of people that's coming up with all kinds of diseases and things. So we have, I don't know whether people that, that's living in that neighborhood, that they don't come out and speak against this type of thing, against paddy, so people are not concerned. And I still have a concern about all the houses and things that's in war, not just on some streets, but all over war. That, uh, needs to be looked at, that needs to be towed down, they're falling in, and it's really degrading to the neighborhoods. And we talk about, we want peoples to come in and bring our business, you know, to this town, and I'm just hoping that we take a good look and try to get some of these things cleaned up. And, uh, I look at some of the streets are so narrow, especially when you drive down Watch Street, and you think about the school buses driving down, you cannot pass a school bus on Watch Street. You, if you see one, you just got to pull over in somebody's yard and wait till they pass. And, uh, I think we need to take a good hard look at all these real, real narrow streets. It's two cars, at least it should be wide enough for cars to pass without going into a ditch. And I just say we need to be a little bit more concerned about our city where we live, and make it more safe, and at least make it look presentable, that people might want to come here, and jobs, you know, will come into this town, but we really need it. All our young peoples don't leave, so you gonna see people with me, like, looking like me, old, you know, and, and this would be considered a retired town. So I don't want that. We need young peoples around. I love to be with a lot of young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Item fourteen would be pay the bills.
So move.
Motion in the second to pay the bills, in discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand. I see six four, none against. Meeting will be in Monday the twelfth, need a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor, stand?
Well, absolutely. Do what now? You just, do what now?